It is 5:30, Tuesday, January 19, 2021. Welcome to the Bellevue Board of Equalization meeting. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 20-36 and due to concerns related to the coronavirus, this Board of Equalization meeting will be conducted virtually. No member of the Board of Equalization member is attending in person with the exception of the mayor. All other members are appearing virtually, and this meeting is closed to the physical attendance of the public. The public can view the meeting on the city's Facebook page by viewing the meeting live. However, no participation via Facebook will be allowed. Please call the Community Relations Department at 402-515-6259 to obtain the information to attend virtually and participate when allowed. I would ask that all public attending via GoToMeeting, please mute your microphones. Members of the public will only be allowed to speak during public hearings once opened up to the public, and I will call on members of the public one at a time to speak. Agendas can be found on the city's website, and that's Bellevue.net. Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Susan, are you with us? You are muted.
Yes, I am. Okay, Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
All council, all council members are present. Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers, and it can also be found online under Nebraska Revised Statutes 84-1407 through 84-1414, as well as the Governor's Executive Order 20-36. Start with a, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions on the agenda? Please vote. Susan?
Councilman Bob Stinson.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
Councilman Preister.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Yes.
And I missed you, didn't I, Thomas? Councilman Burns.
Yes.
Thank you. All voting yes.
All right, thank you. Item 5, Public Hearing to Consider the Levy of Leans for Non-Payment of Costs Associated with the Demolition and Removal of a Structure at the Following Locations. I will open this up for public hearing, so if there is anyone here to speak regarding any of the levy of leans, please state, so state your name and address, please.
Mayor, Ms. Campos is here. She will unmute herself.
Okay.
We're here.
Okay, Ms. Campos, if I could just have you state your full name and address, and then I'll let you talk.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Campos, and we're at 1210 Norton Drive in Papillion. I own property at 7416 South 20th Street, known as Jeb's Place.
Okay, go ahead, and you want to talk about your lien?
Well, I don't actually have a lien because I made the payment. The problem that I have is that this was, I got a notice, what, a year and a half ago?
May, 2019.
May of 19, and it was due to tall grass and trees, shrubs, brush that needed to get cleaned up. I had 10 days to do that, and as far as I was concerned, I fulfilled my agreement to get the grass cut and to clean up some debris, some trees, there again, like I said, logs, and get it compiled. I had quite a bit of trees that I had cut down, tuned to about 30 of them. I've been getting it cleaned up, getting the stumps pulled out, and had it piled up. And then 18 months later, they show up at the property and they do a cleanup of their own. Took what they wanted, as far as I was concerned, didn't take everything, but took a lot of the big stuff, and I don't feel that that was valid of not being notified again that there was a problem after 18 months.
Why weren't we notified after our 10 days when we cleaned it up that it wasn't satisfactory? Or, you know, we had--
Okay, have you, have you talked with anybody at the city about that yet?
Yes.
Okay, and you say that you did pay it anyway, it's, there's no lien, correct?
Yeah, I didn't want to lean on the property for any reason.
Okay.
And they did come and clean up what they wanted to clean up, so there again, my, my opposition is the way it happened, the lack of communication, the fact that we were notified, we took care of the notification, and then 18 months later, they just show up and, and do what they wanted to do.
Take wood that, we were in the process of, you know, we were there three times that week, cutting up wood, splitting wood, making stacks.
Okay.
That kind of stuff, and then all of a sudden, it's gone.
Yeah, it's quite a process with, with what I went through, working full-time, three kids, an 82-year-old father that lives across the street that tries to help me out as much as he possibly can, so.
I mean, our problem is why it took 18 months? Why weren't we notified that there was a problem? 18 months?
Okay, Jim, Bree, do you have any additional information on this?
Code enforcement--
Joey, do you want to speak to this?
Okay, Joey.
Yes, Inspector Gregory is the one that was assigned this complaint, and he can run through a summary of the events that took place and kind of explain the code enforcement's position on what took place at the property.
Joey, do you know, was this explained to the Camposes?
I'll let Matt speak to that. Yeah, we, I thought we had communication. He'll explain the reason that the timeline was so lengthy.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Campos, I mean, Ms. Campos is exactly right. I mean, it did take 18 months to get that cleanup done, and the reason being several, several things, with the year being the way it was, right in the middle of COVID, about the time that I did my revisit. My revisit was July 1, and that was actually after the 30 days that the Camposes got from Mr. Risto. They had a hearing, and he awarded them that extra time to get things taken care of. And so my revisit was set for June 30. I did that on July 1. What was left, if, I don't know, Bree, if you wanted, number, picture number eight is the day of my revisit. What was left, they did clean up the huge pile of dirt and concrete debris, and, and probably some of the, it's hard to tell if they cleaned up some of the wood, but there's still a lot of it left. Firewood is fine, so that wasn't an issue, it was mainly just the large logs and the largest trunks, and then there was a couple larger pieces of tree down the hill that was left. That was submitted for a cleanup July 1 to the Parks Department, to the Public Works.
July 1.
Yeah, what year?
July 1, 2019. And then that's basically, we, it was in part in Public Works' hands to get it cleaned up, and we waited, and due to the size of this, it's a larger cleanup, so it's harder to coordinate these type of cleanups. You know, we did do smaller cleanups and mowings, being in the middle of the summer, extremely busy with those types of cleanups, so it probably got put on the back burner. And then as the year went by, we had the COVID thing set in. I know the Public Works had a lot of folks out on quarantine a couple of different times, so they had manpower issues there. And in that time, I believe we kind of transitioned to working with some contractors, and I think once we got the contractors lined up, we still worked on a lot of smaller mowings, a lot of the other cleanups, and a busy year with all that, and then it finally got to the point where we actually do that cleanup over there. It was still there. You know, I could tell there was little bits and pieces taken care of, but it wasn't completely cleaned up, and I based my decision on talking to Supervisor Bachman, and also the, the letter that Mr. Risto presented to you folks as far as what needed to be cleaned up, and large tree debris and logs was still there, and that was notated on that letter from, from the city, from that hearing. So that's what we cleaned up. They did have Mr. Campos Senior was there, and I spoke with him that day of the cleanup and explained to him why we were there. He was a little upset at first, and I just explained to him, you know, our, where we were at and our process, and that I know they've been working hard on it. Firewood was fine again, and I basically just told him we're going to get rid of a lot of the bigger logs, the large, huge trunks that were rotted, they wouldn't be good firewood anyway. He asked that we leave some pieces because he wanted to work on them and get them, you know, cut up and, and, you know, split into firewood, so I, you know, I worked with him there as far as leaving something. That's why Mr. Campos, you say we're kind of selective, and that was basically based on Mr. Campos Senior's request that day of the cleanup. So he tried to get rid of a lot of the junk that was no good, no fire, you know, the firewood, a lot of the larger ones that were down the hill, and just a lot of the large limbs and such, left all the firewood that was split. That answers your question, Mr. and Mrs. Campos? Or helps you understand a little more?
That explains it. My only, there again, opposition would be that when you inspected on July 1, that you had decided that it wasn't quite, you know, up to snuff, had I been notified, and then with everything that happened, you know, I might have been a little bit quicker at it, I might have had, you know, a little bit different perspective. I thought we were in agreement to, obviously, I wasn't going to get everything cut up within 10 days. 30 trees, it was a little bit tough. And I mean, I moved a lot of wood and, and, and pulled 11 stumps out, I got another 10 stumps to go that need to come out of there. So I mean, eventually, I want to develop this. It's just going to take a little bit of time with everything that's happened, as you stated, with COVID and, and working full-time, so.
I guess my, this picture right here that you're showing on here, that's from 2019, and the pictures that we sent you of were pictures, recent pictures that had all the wood stacked up and all the big log stumps, logs in piles to be cut up. So this picture was from July of 2019, not what it looked like when you went over there.
18 months later, yeah.
Right.
Well, yeah, we have, there's, there are pictures of the day of the cleanup. Bree, if you, number 13, and then number, number 10 is the one area down the hill that was a large log.
Right. There again, I was, I was in a process, and--
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's, it's my land, and I understand the codes, but there again, I would have made more room than it would have got drug up and chainsawed and split like everything else, so.
Right, right, and, and as, to answer your question as far as the communication, normally when we submit something to a cleanup, you know, we hope, we're hoped to get it done in a, in a reasonable amount of time. We don't, nor, we don't have time to, to contact every single person we're dealing with. There's two, you know, two inspectors out on the road, split the city in half, and to make contact with everybody on every single instance, we, we hopefully rely on those folks to call us back, say, hey, look, we're working on it, we've got this much done, can I get a little more time? And that's, and that's perfectly fine. Usually that's what happens, as far as people reach out to us, because there's two of us trying to reach out to hundreds of notices that we've written in a month. It, you know, I don't know, that's not an excuse, but that's the way we normally run our day-to-day stuff, as far as trying to work with folks.
When we originally had the meeting, I wasn't told that, you know, that that was something that I could do. The communication part, you had sent two registered letters to me about the bill, two registered letters about this hearing and the lien and, and all that, so, you know, I mean, we say it took enough effort to do that twice, which to me is wasteful.
Not get, not get notice that it was not to your satisfaction within the 30 days.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
I think you could understand where, where you would see that, that things were progressing and that I wasn't in this situation, so. I mean, I figured that these trees that were taken off, I probably lost $10,000 to $15,000 worth of firewood, so that's kind of what I'm upset about, that and, and, and the, you know, the no communication, so. I paid the bill because I didn't want to lean on my property. I will continue to work on that. If it's not good enough, then, you know, we'll have to deal with that then, I guess, but it is what it is.
Okay, I thank you for that explanation. I'll review that with Administrator Risto and see if there's something that can be done in the future, or, or see what the feeling is as far as what we just discussed. I know we're still open for public hearing. Is there any council members that have a question before we ask for anybody else? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the inspector. If I understand right, is that we issued the notice, then there was a hearing with Mr. Risto, and there was a 30-days extension given, and you went out on July 1 to do the inspection. After that inspection, did you let the Campos know that it was not satisfactorily cleaned up and they needed to do more? Was there any other conversation between you and Campos family or any other person from the city?
No, then normally there is no, once we submit it for a cleanup, we do a revisit, and it's not satisfactory, we don't normally reach out to folks as far as the properties and the cleanup that's going to happen.
But we're hearing that he, from Mr. Campos, that he did do some cleaning up, and from the pictures, if I'm, now the pictures, my view, I don't know if this was my computer or what, but some of those pictures look upside down or sideways, but so after July 1, Mr. Campos said before that he had done some cleaning up.
Yeah.
We did an inspection and did not contact Mr. Campos again. The assumption would be, is maybe the property is satisfactorily in the condition that the city's happy with.
Well, what I did, the picture eight shows, there's a large area of dirt there. That was a huge pile of dirt and debris and concrete that was cleared out, and may or may not have cleared some logs out from there, but I based my, my decision to submit it for cleanup, and after talking with Supervisor Bachman, based on the letter from Mr. Risto, where specifically noted in there to Mr. Campos, "Large logs and tree debris must be cleaned up," in that letter that he, from, as a result of his hearing. And Mr. Campos had that letter just as well as I did, so that's, that's where I based my decision on, that it wasn't 100% complete, and I think Mr. Campos knew that, it's just he hadn't gotten it done yet, and like I said, normally, we don't, you know, when we write, you know, several hundred notices a month between the two of us, we can't always reach out to everybody, and--
Okay, so, when we had, and I apologize for interrupting you, but we, when we had that original meeting, I had moved a lot of that stuff into one specific area and was continually cutting on it, shutting, coordinating, cutting it down, cleaned up a lot of the branches and debris, and, and got rid of stuff to the dump, and there again, we're, we're missing the thought process or the aspect of, I assumed, obviously wrongly, that there wasn't anything, or that you were happy with the progress, you understood, and then I was continually working on it, and that it was, you know, eventually going to get to a nice grassy area, you know, without the notice of that there was still not enough done.
Within 18 months.
And then you go 18 months is the problem that I'm having. When you send the notices out and you tell the people they've got 10 days, and on day 11, whatever's not done, somebody should be contacting somebody that, or you bring the cleanup crew then. It's understood. 10 days is 10 days, and if you showed up with the cleanup crew then, we wouldn't be having this conversation. There again, 18 months later, I'm thinking that you're seeing the progress, and I'm doing the best I can, and it's, the grass is being cut down, and, and it's being maintained as much as it possibly can, is a little disheartening.
Okay, we see, I meant totally at that point, I understand what you're saying. Bree, do you have something to add?
I was just going to say, I completely understand the communication piece and the 18-month delay, and I can't really speak on that issue, but it's something that Mayor Hike indicated, we'll have some internal meetings, see what we can do to streamline that process. But as far as this file, it was part of the hearing in June of 2019 with Mr. Campos and City Administrator Mr. Risto, and he was cited, I have the notice up, for the large logs, tree debris, branches, brush, piles of dirt and debris. He was given an additional time to clean that up, as shown on the picture number 10, it wasn't cleaned up, and then even when they went back out 18 months later, the same issue was still present, so even in 18 months, it was not cleaned up. So I know that that's a long time, but as far as the communication piece, the follow-up, our letter that is sent from the city administrator after an appeal says, "Abate the issue," and if you don't abate the issue, then we will do it for you, and we will assess those costs. It does not talk about follow-up, it does not say that we will let you know whether that's satisfactory or not. I mean, the simple point is, is that in July of 2019, the logs and stuff were still there, and they were supposed to be removed by the notice. So I would just put that out there, communication, timeframe, we do need to work on that, and we need to have those conversations.
Mr. Campos, I'll, I'll review that with Mr. Risto, and regardless, we'll get back to you with some kind of finding.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Okay, I appreciate you showing up tonight and addressing us. Is there anybody else on the line that would like to talk regarding leans? Bree, do you see anybody? Okay, I will close the public hearing. And there is no vote on that one, right, Bree? Okay, we will move on to number six. Resolution BoE Number 2021-0119-01, Levying of Leans for Non-Payment of Costs Associated with the Mowing, Tremming Tree Removal and/or General Cleanup Efforts on the Identified Properties Within the City of Bellevue. So we need a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve Resolution 2021-0119-0, as amended for tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to approve, as amended. Any discussion or comments from the council members? Okay, seeing nobody, Susan, would you take a vote?
Yes. Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman McCaw?
Yes.
Councilman Preister?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
And Councilman Stinson?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I can.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns to adjourn. Any questions? Susan, would you take the vote, please?
Yes. Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. All voting yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. We will take a little break for about four minutes and be right back with the city council meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. All right, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, January 19, 2021, 6:00 PM. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 20-36, and due to the concerns related to the coronavirus, this city council meeting will be conducted virtually. No member of the city council is attending in person with the exception of the mayor. All other members are appearing virtually, and this meeting is closed to the physical attendance of the public. The public can view the meeting on the city's Facebook page by viewing the meeting live. However, no participation via Facebook will be allowed. Please call the Community Relations Department at 402-515-6259 to obtain the information to attend virtually and participate when allowed. I would ask that all public attending via GoToMeeting, please mute your microphones. Members of the public will only be allowed to speak during public hearings once opened up to the public, and I will call on members of the public one at a time to speak. Agendas can be found on the city's website at Bellevue.net. Susan, would you call the meeting to order, please?
Yes. Councilman Stinson?
Here.
Councilman Cook?
Here.
Councilman McCaw?
Here.
Councilman Preister?
Here.
Councilman Burns?
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
Everyone's in attendance, so I will call the meeting to order. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. It can also be found online under Nebraska Revised Statutes 84-1407 through 84-1414, as well as the Governor's Executive Order 20-36. Item 5, Approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. 5A, we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Councilwoman Welch?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Who is the second by?
Councilman Cook.
Councilman Cook. So a motion by Welch, seconded by Cook to approve the agenda. Any questions? Okay, please vote. Susan?
Councilman Stinson?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman McCaw?
Yes.
Councilman Preister?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. I have a motion for the consent agenda. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Is that right? McCaw?
No, second.
Okay, any comments or questions on the agenda? Any council members want to remove anything on the consent agenda? Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I'd like to hold the quarantine for the--
On the consent agenda? Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I'd like to hold the appointee for the Bellevue Municipal Corporation.
Okay, which item is that, Thomas?
Let me.
Do you have that, Bree?
It's eight A.
Which one is it?
Eight B.
Sorry, eight B.
It's eight B.
Okay, so eight B will put on the regular agenda. Any other changes? Okay, so we have a motion by Preister, second by McCaw. Please vote.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman McCaw?
Yes.
Councilman Preister?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
And Councilman Stinson?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. This one is Mayor's Award of the Jewel of Bellevue, and this one's kind of special award, at least for me, and I know a lot of other people, but the Jewel of Bellevue, Frank Coomer always made these awards at Irwin's Jewelry, and I don't know how many dozens or but he's made a lot of them for a lot of people. Looking through the list, I don't recall that Frank Coomer ever received a Jewel of Bellevue, the award that he gave out so many times. If there's anybody worthy of it, I think, I think that was probably missed at some point, but I think Frank is very worthy of it. If you didn't know Frank, then you probably didn't know Bellevue. So this is a brand-new design from Camp Awards. And I'll hold it up here. I don't know if we have a picture, Bree, that we can show. Was there a picture? Of the award, but we'll send it out afterwards. But it's got the jewel on top, the big diamond on top, and on the award, it says Jewel of Bellevue, Frank Coomer, your contributions and giving spirit to the Bellevue community will live on for generations. January two thousand twenty-one. So I did meet with Pat this afternoon, Frank's wife, and she graciously accepted the award for him. But anyway, if you want to see it, it'll be in the Mayor's office tomorrow morning. And very well deserved, and I wish we could, I wish we could present it to him, but not, not the case.
Mayor, that is actually going to be on the City of Bellevue's Facebook page tonight, so they'll be able to see a picture of it with the photo of you and Pat as well.
Did everybody hear that? So it'll be on the City of Bellevue's Facebook page this evening, if anybody wants to look at it with the picture of Pat accepting it, so. All right, well, I appreciate that. Moving on to seven B, Presentation on Refinancing of Bonds to Save Interest and Manage Debt Resulting in a Positive Effect on Debt Service, Cash Flow, and Net Savings. And I believe Michael Rogers with Gilmore Bell and Cody Wickham with D A Davidson are on the call, is that correct? And I will give them a chance to speak if one of them wants to take over.
Mike?
Here you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I have a little technical difficulty on my computer, but luckily Mike and I are here in the same room, so. Good evening, everyone. I missed the last part, so I'm not sure I was introduced, but Cody Wickham with D A Davidson. Now, hold on one second here, now, now my kicking back on. Okay, I apologize.
You're all right. We'll work through it together.
Yeah. All right, so what we're looking at today is just kind of the next refunding in line. Obviously, we, you all kind of probably getting pretty comfortable with these. We've done a lot of these in twenty twenty, just trying to take advantage of the low interest rate environments. What we've, what we took a look at last month was another taxable advance refunding of the city's two thousand seventeen certificates of participation. These bonds were originally issued in two parts. It was these various swimming pool projects and the city hall projects. The current average interest rate on those bonds is a three point zero seven seven. Because these bonds are not callable until December of two thousand twenty-two, we can't refinance these with tax exempt bonds, but we do have the opportunity to look at an advanced refunding with taxable bonds. That's, as you recall, that's what we did with the Municipal Building Corp, the Convention Center project, as well as the number of SIDs that weren't quite callable. This is, this is another opportunity that has presented itself. We looked at doing it at the same time with some of those other deals, but because the call date was further out, it didn't really make sense, but it's, it's recently came into the, came into the green, if you will. We have a test that we use to determine whether or not a refunding is, is hit the right time, and that's the present value savings percentage. So we, we run a potential refunding analysis, and if the total amount of savings divided by the par amount that we're issuing is above three percent threshold, then it's deemed a good refunding by the GFOA or the Government Finance Officers Association. So this one just recently crossed above that three percent threshold. So obviously, we spoke with Rich, talked through the idea, anytime there's a chance to save money, he tends to be on board. So we got the ball rolling and we contacted the rating agencies and the necessary steps to get this process done. So what you have before you tonight is an ordinance to authorize the refunding. If you, we'd also like for you to consider waiving the three reading rule, which would allow us to move swiftly on this. I will say, just in the, in the recent weeks and today in particular, we have seen rates creep up a little bit, so our savings took a little bit of a hit. So this is really just being proactive by the city. If this were to deteriorate and fall below the threshold that makes sense, we would just put it on the shelf and the city is not liable for any of, any expenses. So it's, it's kind of a, if it works, we'll do it. If not, there's really no harm. We can just continue to monitor this and pull the trigger when it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Cody. Any questions for Cody on that? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Cody, can you give us a rough idea what the approximate savings to the taxpayers will be in doing these refunding bonds?
That's a good question, Donna. I probably should have said that. Yeah, what we're looking at, the current average interest rate is a three point zero seven seven. When we, when it first kind of jumped into the, into the go zone, it was at a one point, a one point eight five five true interest cost. That was a net savings of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to the city. When I updated it this morning, our true interest cost went from a one point eight five five to a one point nine nine nine, and our savings dipped to a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twelve thousand forty dollars. So we lost a little bit, but you know, these markets are bouncing around pretty good here recently. We could pick some back up.
Good, and we're saving at least a hundred thousand dollars at this point, so well done. Thank you for bringing it forward to us and our finance department.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions for Cody? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I believe Cody and Michael will not be present when we get to item thirteen C. Is that correct, Cody?
Yeah, that's correct. We're zooming in from Gretna City Hall here. Their, their meeting starts at six thirty, so we were hoping to answer any questions you may have now, and then we're going to take care of our business here.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure all council members were aware of that. If you have any questions for these two gentlemen, now would be the time to ask them, because they won't be available when we get to item thirteen C and, and actually vote on this, what they're talking about tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions regarding the bonds? Okay, seeing nobody, and your pictures are really small, so if I'm missing somebody, just yell at any time this evening. Thank you, Cody. And who else was with us? Michael? So thanks for being here and enjoy your next meeting. And I'll just add that we do have Rich on the line if you have any questions later. All right, that'll take us to item number eight B, Recommendation to Approve Matt McKinney to the Bellevue City Municipal Bond Building Corporation. And let's see, I think Thomas pulled that off. So you have any question, particular questions, Thomas?
Let's have a motion, let's have a motion first, and then a second, and then discussion.
All right, we'll do the discussion. Motion, Councilwoman Welch?
I make a motion that we appoint Matt McKinney to the Bellevue Municipal Building Corporation.
Second for discussion, anyone? Burns, second?
Second.
Okay, now we'll open for discussion. Go ahead, Thomas.
Okay, my first question is, I, before we do discuss, I just wanted to make sure, I know Mr. McKinney works for you, Mayor, and I just, I want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest before we get into discussion or actually vote on this item.
Bree, I didn't think he was. He's a ten ninety-nine employee at Hike Real Estate, so I can't, I don't have any direction on him, but he is a ten ninety-nine employee.
Yeah, so I think you have that layer. I hadn't thought about that, or Councilman Burns, so thank you for bringing that up. I think it's good to walk through. I guess the next analysis is whether the mayor would profit off of Mr. McKinney being appointed to this board. On this, I, I don't, I don't see how he would profit. If anybody thinks differently, now would be the time to jump in. But I don't think that he has any gain by Mr. McKinney being on the board.
And I would just add, he is a ten ninety-nine employee, so he's not an actual W two employee where I can direct him to do anything. I just, I did pick Matt just because I've worked with him twelve years. I know his, he's a critical thinker. He's very conservative, and he's an investor as well, so he's, he's money smart, so. Other than that, Thomas, you want to add anything else, or?
Yeah, so I, I, one, Matt McKinney is a really good guy. I like Matt or Mr. McKinney a lot. So my concern is, is just that on the, I guess the information that we got in our packets, it looks like it's a screenshot from Hike Real Estate's website. And really, all we got was kind of a bio, and I guess I'm not really going to vote yes or no. I'll probably actually abstain just because I, you know, when we look at the other appointee that we approved, who was Valerie, you know, we kind of got a whole slew of information, and we also got sort of more of a description of, you know, the library board. And so I think I'll just be abstaining, and that's why I kind of wanted to pull this off, is I, I just would like more information, and I don't think it's a good look having the Hike Real Estate or it more or less being sort of a screenshot from that, rather than more of a formal format.
Okay, I know you didn't contact me. The agenda's been out since Thursday or Friday. Did you, did you contact anybody regarding that question you had?
Me? No, I have not. So that's why I'm just bringing it up now, so.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the council? Councilwoman Welch?
I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I also know Matt McKinney, and being a realtor, I've had many opportunities to work with him. I think he, it would be an outstanding asset in anything that he would be appointed to. So with that being said, I'm going to vote in favor of him being on the Bellevue Municipal Building Corporation.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing nobody, I will, we have a motion by Welch, second by Burns. Please vote.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Cook?
Yes.
So we have five yes votes, one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to item eight C. Am I looking at that correct?
Yes.
Approval of the entire revised city council policy. So do I have a motion? Councilman Preister? You're muted. Councilman?
I'm sorry, my mic was on. Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to improve the entirety of the revised council policies as presented in our packet.
Second.
Who's the second?
Second.
So a motion by Preister, second by Cook. Any comments or questions on the policy? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Ms. Robbins and the staff, finance particularly, and everyone involved in the input to get to this point. It's been not only revised, but it has been retyped so that over the years, as it's been adjusted, it was adjusted in different styles. Now it looks like one clear, concise document meets legal standards, and I think it satisfies all of our needs. So to the clerk, but particularly to Ms. Robbins and everyone involved, I appreciate all the input in this very thorough realignment and revision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? Okay, motion by Preister, second by Cook. Please vote.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah.
And Miss, Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item nine, approved citizen communication, where there were no requests. Item ten, liquor licenses, there are none. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four zero two one, request to rezone Lot One, wallback addition from RG twenty to BN for the purpose of commercial development. Applicant is Amigos Market LLC. General location, West Chandler Road and South Twenty-Eighth Street, and this is a third reading. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please? Susan, you are muted.
Okay. Ordinance number four zero two one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone class of a, station of land located at or about seventy-six sixteen, South Twenty-Eighth Street, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I'll take a motion. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number four zero two one.
A second?
Motion by Stinson, second by Cook. Discussion. We have a discussion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Tammy Palm on tonight?
Yes, I'm on.
Tammy, a couple of quick questions, and I have a couple of quick questions for Pastor Rivera, if he's here too. But Tammy, does this development, would any development on this? But Tammy, does this development, would any development on this property require a sidewalk?
Yes, any development on the property would require a sidewalk per building code.
I think on this particular property, that would be probably, on the east side would be 28th Street, and the south side would be Chandler.
Correct.
And also, the zoning that we're considering tonight, does that allow a drive-through?
No, it would not allow a drive-through.
So we would not have customers be able to drive around the building, go up to a window and order food or alcohol, pay for it, and then leave the property?
Correct.
Okay. Is Pastor Rivera available?
Councilman Cook, I will just note that we cannot ask anybody, including the applicant, questions, only staff, unless it's open for public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe there are some questions, but if we're not able to do that for Mr. Rivera, then I won't have any for him either. And I do appreciate the other council members looking carefully over the emails that were sent in and some coordination. To the public, we did receive all of your comments, and they were shared around, and they were not missed, although this is a little more difficult by doing things online rather than an in-person meeting. So it may have seemed a little confusing for you, and for that, I'm sorry. But I'm glad for those who were able to get on now. I did send out a link so that people could tune into this meeting and also the phone number so that they could. And in the absence of asking any additional questions, I would just comment that the neighbors' concerns about safety for children, sidewalks that Councilman Cook mentioned, the concerns for traffic near to the school, as well as the encroachment into the residential area are all noted, and they are all of concern to the neighbors that I appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cook, wasn't there some homework or some, some things that we asked Mr. Rivera to do? And I know I didn't have the opportunity to call him and ask him. Would it, would it be maybe pertinent for us to open it up to public opinion just to be able to ask him those questions or not?
I may need some help from Bree here. Bree, if we open it, then it's open. I mean, we can't just call Mr. Rivera forward.
If you do a motion to open for public hearing, it's open for public hearing. So anybody?
Thank you.
The public hearing is the second reading, which, you know, generally, that's what that's for.
Right, but there was a couple of things that we asked Mr. Rivera to do, and I just wasn't sure if those had been accomplished or not. And I think part of it was for him to talk to, to the neighbors and some of the concerns that they had. So my apologies that I didn't get to him to be able to ask him that question.
Would Tammy have any information on that?
I have not had any communication with Mr. Rivera, so I am afraid I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I can only report what the neighbors have reported to me, and that is that they have not been reached out to. None of them, at least, who were in contact with me, probably eight or so since, have reported that they have not had any additional communications, which to me is a bit disappointing because all of these people are potential customers and their neighbors, and to have had the three-plus weeks to be able to at least reach out and talk to them, I'm personally a little disappointed.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I would just add before we move on to a vote that we do appreciate the public's letters. And I could tell you this council does read them and pay attention to them and take everything into consideration. So again, I thank the public for getting involved during this COVID time. I know it's a little more difficult, but thank you for the letters, and I hope it continues. So if there's no more comments and questions, comments or questions, we have a motion by Stinson, second by Cook, to approve 4021, ordinance number 4021. Susan, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Burns?
I vote no.
Ms. Welch?
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
No.
We have four yes votes and four no, or two no votes with Mr. Preister and Mr. Burns voting no.
Okay, motion passes. Item 11B, ordinance number 4022, request to rezone Lot 2, Wolf Creek Replat 4 from BGH to RG 8-PS for the purpose of multifamily development. Applicant is Wolf Creek Apartments 2 LLC. General location is 10904 South 15th Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4022. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619 by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 10904 South 15th Street. More particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the ordinance 4022, I believe.
I'll second that.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch. Discussion. Any comments or questions? Councilman Stinson?
I just want to talk about one thing. If the developers are on here, this is nothing personal against their development. It's an apartment building. It's going to look fine. My concern is the traffic on 15th Street going into Willow Springs. Right now, the traffic at 15th and Cornhusker is, as we know, pretty bad. The traffic study that was done for this development shows that there's not going to be much more impact on it. Problem is, is you have a bad intersection already. So no matter what impact that you have on that intersection, it's still going to be bad. Going into the housing area, the traffic coming out of that apartment, I know they talked about putting up a no right turn sign. Might help a few, but I can guarantee you, from being a police officer and patrolling that neighborhood, it does have problems with traffic. And people are not going to obey a no right turn. If they want to go that way, they're going to go regardless whether there's a sign there or not. One of the problems is that sign's going to come off of private property. So I'm not for sure that any tickets that you're going to write are really going to do any good with it being on private property. So I'm not really concerned about the apartment complex. I'm concerned about the traffic. Hogantown has a park alongside. There's kids in that park. I know from running traffic in that area myself, it's got a lot of traffic. The people run those stop signs all the time. We could sit there and we, we could write many tickets in an hour's time just sitting there watching those stop signs. So I just want you to think about the traffic going in there. We're talking about the 15th Street Road extension, two years out. If we can at least, and I don't know if it's possible, Jim, if we can at least push that forward so that we can get it going and get it done within, before a two-year time period, that would help considerably. But until that time, I can't support putting another building into that area, especially that close to that housing area.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate Councilman Stinson's comments. Traffic is a concern. I too would rather that we had the extension done about the same time, one year from when these apartments will be built. Unfortunately, there are a number of issues that we have to address to get that done. But I think the two could develop simultaneously. And I believe that the city is having our law enforcement check, and we're preventing truck traffic from going down through the neighborhood, which is likely a bigger safety issue and concern for the neighbors. So I'm very optimistic and hopeful we can get that extension in and we can address the concerns of the neighbors. But in the last meeting, I did ask the developer if they could hold off for another year so the two could be done at the same time. He replied that, given costs and uncertainties of the future, that wasn't very practical. So we're here having to make another decision. And I think it's a good project with good quality. That's not been a concern. But I think the city can address the traffic. It's just going to take us a while to get that done. And I do empathize with the neighbors and with Councilman Stinson, who's been a champion for their cause. Thank you.
Yep, I would just add, it's kind of a two-edged sword here. We have to have the development to generate more money, to do more things for the area as well. So I can tell you, this 15th Street is a priority with our administration. And by adding the value and collecting property tax and adding more people down that area, you're going to generate more sales tax. So it does help us get to that end result, and that's getting 15th Street done. So I would just add, it's, yeah, it's the chicken or the egg. So any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion by Preister, second by Welch. Please vote.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns?
Yes.
We have five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Stinson voting no. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 12, ordinance for, ordinance, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. 12A, ordinance number 4003. Request for continuance until March 16th, 2021 by Mike Keller on behalf of the applicant. So if I can get a motion to table? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion that we table, continue this to?
For 16th.
March 16th, per the applicant's request.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 13, ordinances for introduction, first reading, 13A. Ordinance number 4023, request to rezone Lot 2, Bellevue Business Park Replat 6 from AG to FX for the purpose of flex development. Applicant is Dennis Schworr LLC. General location is 10th Street and Alberta Avenue. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619 by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 10th and Alberta Avenue. More particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held February 2nd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Item 13B, ordinance number 4024, request to rezone lots 1 through 263 and outlots A through D, Alta Collins being a platting of the south. Is that one half, Bree? Sorry. Jim, can you read that?
Yes, it's one half.
One half.
Okay, of the northeast quarter of Section 7, Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RS 72 and RD-60 for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant is Orchard Valley, Inc., location, South 48th Street, South Cape Heart Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number, I lost my place here, 4024. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619 by changing the zone classification of land located at or about south of 48th Street and Cape Heart Road. More particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be held February 2nd, 2021 at 6:00 PM for ordinance number 4024. Item 13C, ordinance number 4025, authorizing and providing for the issuance of limited tax general obligation refunding certificates of participation. Series 2021 in an amount not to exceed $4,350,000. And we do have Rich on the line. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, authorizing and approving a lease purchase transaction with a bank or trust company, the proceeds of which will be used to provide for the payment and redemption of certain outstanding certificates of participation. Series 2017, which were used to pay the cost to acquire renovations and associated furnishings and equipment for City Hall and the city's swimming pools and related facilities and equipment for use by the city. Approving issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed $4,350,000, principal amount of certificates of participation in such lease. Fixing in part and providing for the fixing in part of certain provisions of the lease and related documents and related matters.
Thank you. And the administration is requesting to waive the rules regarding three readings, hold a public hearing, and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting. So if I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to suspend our rules of having three readings and hold the public hearing tonight and then the vote after that on this bonding.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. To suspend the rules of having three separate readings, to hold the public hearing, and then vote tonight. Any discussion or questions on that? Seeing none, I will open, open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak regarding the, the bonds?
Mayor, we need to vote on the suspension of the rules.
Oh, sorry. Got ahead of myself. All right, let's go back. So we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Welch, correct? To suspend the rules. So there was no questions on that one, so let's vote on that.
Okay, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
And Mr. Stinson?
Yes, yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now how about I open the public hearing? So the public hearing is open regarding the, the bonds. So is there anybody here to speak regarding the refinancing? See anybody online? Bree?
I don't see anybody, Mayor.
Okay, nobody in the queue, so I will close the public hearing. Now I will take a motion to approve ordinance 4025. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve ordinance Number 4025.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Discussion, comments, questions? Okay, please vote. Shirley, or, yep. Not Shirley, Susan.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
And Mr. Cook?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 14, Public Hearing on Matters Other Than Ordinances, 14A, Public Hearing for CDBG CV Allocation Round 3 and Substantial Amendment to the 2019 Action Plan. Susan, would you read? Do you need to read that, Bree? Does she need to read that?
No, you can just open it for public hearing.
So I will open item 14 up for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the CDBG CV? Anybody in the public?
I don't see anybody, Mayor.
Okay, nobody in the queue, so I will close the public hearing. And there is no vote, correct?
Correct.
Item 15, Resolutions, 15A, Resolution Number 2021-01. A resolution adopting the substantial amendment to the 2019 to 2020 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the mayor to sign the resolution along with forms SF 424, 424-D, and the certifications, and to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So I do need a motion for that. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve item 15A.
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Any discussions, comments? Please vote. Susan?
Okay, Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
And Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 15B, Resolution Number 2021-02, to approve the Second Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement Creating the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency as approved by Resolution Number 2020-018 by the agency and to authorize the mayor to sign. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2021-02.
Second.
Motion by Preister, or motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? And Jim and Bree, just to reiterate, we're good on this, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
This is the easy one.
All right. No further comments or questions, please vote. Susan?
Mr. Burns?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
And Mr. Preister?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 15C, Resolution Number 2021-03, to amend the master fee schedule. Take a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion, re-approve Resolution 2021-03.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stenson. Any comments or questions? Please vote. Susan?
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 16B, Recommend Approval of Purchase of the Communications Upgrade with Pro forma and Motorola in an amount not to exceed $45,709.34. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 16B.
Second.
Who is the second?
McCaw.
McCaw, okay. Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote. Susan?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
And Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 16C, Approve and Authorize the Mayor to Sign an Interlocal Agreement with the 55th Wingoff at Air Force Base for Fire and Emergency Services During a Pandemic or Other State of Emergency. Take a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, re-approve 16C.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote. Susan?
Mr. S, let's see, Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. 16D, Approval to Purchase a 2021 S770 T4 Bobcat Skid Steer Loader from Bobcat of Omaha per Source per Source Wheel Contract Number 040319 in the amount of $74,095.98 less $16,600 trade-in for a 2009 Case 184C Skid Loader with the total price not to exceed $57,495. Take a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, re-approve 16D.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote. Susan?
Mr. Prester?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
And Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16E, Approval to Purchase a 2021 Elgin Pelican NP Street Sweeper from McQueen Equipment per MN Contract Number S-8435 in the amount of $234,297, less $30,000 trade-in for a 2009 Elgin Pelican with the total price not to exceed $204,297. Need a motion for that? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item 16E.
Second.
Who wants it? I'm going to give it to Burns. Motion by Prester, seconded by Burns. Any discussion or comments? Please vote. Susan?
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
And Mr. Prester?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. 16F, Approve the Redevelopment Agreement and Redevelopment Promissory Note allowing up to $1,853,782 plus accrued interest to offset TIF eligible expenses for MRES Ascend Holdings LLC. Take a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, re-approve 16F.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote. Susan?
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Prester?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. 16G, Approve Purchase of Replacement of City Desktop Computers from Dell Computer in an Amount Not to Exceed $20,571.60. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 16G.
Second.
Second.
Who's the second?
McCaw, McCaw.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Jerry, I don't have your voice recognized, I guess. I can't ever figure out who that is. Please vote. Susan?
Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Prester?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 17 is Submission of the Administration Reports. Comments must be limited to the items on the current reports. The reports are due at the first meeting of the month. Since there wasn't a meeting on January 5th, the December reports are attached to this packet. So any questions regarding the reports? Okay, seeing none. Is Doug Clark still on?
He is.
Yes.
Hey, just want to introduce Doug Cook to the to the public. I know it's kind of weird. You can't see anybody. It's really lonely in this room, I'm telling you that. But anyway, welcome, Doug, and looking forward to great things.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to work for the city of Bellevue.
Welcome to the Bellevue family, Doug.
Thank you.
Paul, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, yes, I did. In regards to our administrative reports, I just wanted to make a comment for Public Works Department. Mr. Clark is here tonight. Welcome him. But the snow removal was excellent. I work in another city and driving home from work, especially when we got the six, seven inches, and even the other night, Friday night, I'm probably off on the day Saturday. I thought our streets were in much better shape than the couple of communities that I have driven through during those snowstorms. So Doug, pass it down to your guys and gals. Another great job.
Thank you. I have to admit, I have been very impressed with the professionalism that I have seen in this organization. So it's a credit to people who came before me and to the integrity of the folks that you have working for you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Paul. All right, we have no closed session, so I will take a, Councilman Prester, do you have something you want to add?
I will, I will do both if I can.
Okay.
I would say when you're moving huge pieces of equipment like snowplows through the city, trying to get everybody's street done very quickly, occasionally, small things will happen. But in the few times that they do happen, we are also very responsive. We get out, we listen to the homeowner or the person who may have had snow plowed where they didn't want it or have an issue. And so it's not just doing a good job and doing it quickly, but it's service essentially after the sale. So our street department does an excellent job, and you can look on some of the social media comments, and the public all across Bellevue agrees to that. So I just wanted to add that comment, and following that, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Prester, seconded by Welch, to adjourn. Nobody's got any questions on that, right? Please vote. Susan? Hear me?
Yes. Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Prester?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Well, Ms. Welch?
I'll go with that, Susan. Yes.
And Mr. Stenson?
Yes.
And happy belated birthday to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy birthday, Bob.